You don't know, okay, I'll leave it. Okay, sorry.
Okay, it's six thirty, so we'll call this meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law and adopt the agenda. If you can all stand, do the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess not. Item three is comments from the audience regarding agenda items. This is the only time audience members can comment on current agenda items during this business meeting. Before addressing the board, please state your name and address. You may speak for a maximum of five minutes. If multiple people are making the same comment, we ask that you select one person to speak on behalf of the group. Do we have anyone that wants to make a comment? Okay, moving on to item four, gifts and donations and recognition. Lisa, discuss the item four, acceptance of donations for the HCE playground project.
Yeah, so I'm doing this on behalf of Lori Coleman. I think as you saw in your packet, last year you're probably aware that we put a special playground in front of HCE. And the PTO had donated the bulk of those funds to be able to do that. And then you'll see two donations here separately, each a thousand dollars, and per board policy, a donation of a thousand dollars or more has to have board action on that. And so one of them you'll notice is the family of the child who passed away. And so that's what this is in terms of that why it comes across, does board action.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Okay, you said special. What does that mean?
So it's set up in terms of, if you look at the playground that's here, it's for accessible, and probably I should explain what that is, but sometimes our medically fragile children need different playground equipment in order for them to be safe when they're playing outside. That normal playground, both the size of the equipment and what they're able to do on it to provide extra protection is not the same playground equipment. So this was a special because our early childhood program is at Hales Corners Elementary, so this was specifically for those students.
Well, that's really cool that we do that. That's really good. Thank you.
Any other questions? A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Item five, consent agenda. Item five A, we're going to be voting all at once unless anyone wants to pull an item. Item five A is approval of February vouchers and vouchers payable. Item five B, approval of January twenty-third, January thirtieth, and February thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, school board meeting minutes. Item C, approval of Elm Brook sixty-six dot zero-three, two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen agreement. D is approval of early graduation requests, and E, approval of retirement request. Would anyone like to pull an item?
E.
Okay, anyone else? I would like to pull item C. So then we'll be approving items five A, five B, five D. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve A, B, and D.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So item five C, the document has changed. So Dennis, if you could just give us a quick explanation.
Yes, there are actually two separate Elm Brook documents, and one contains information about related services. Elm Brook years ago formed a consortium with the Waukesha School Districts, and they serve as the fiscal agent. If districts, for example, place students at Fairview South, which is also part of the Elm Brook system, they can purchase related services through that consortium. We do the low incidence related services through our CISA contract. So audiology, deaf heart of hearing teacher, that's pretty much the low incidence numbers. The other contract is the seventeen-eighteen contract, and I think the cover sheet was attached to the wrong Elm Brook contract. So Kathy straightened that out, and we have the cover sheet for our autism consultant, Jen Townsend, who also has helped over the last four years to implement the search model in our district. And as explained in the cover sheet, that really has allowed us to get to the point where we have no students on the spectrum who are placed in programs off campus, which has been a significant savings to the district. So that's why the recommendation to renew that contract for one more year.
So I can't tell if what I'm looking at is correct or needs correction. What?
The additional contract, because there's two sixty-six oh-three contracts for Elm Brook. So the one was part of the board packet with the cover sheet. The additional contract was placed in your folder, in the packet folder today.
When?
Today.
Well, I'm asking when, because I've downloaded it.
This afternoon.
Okay, I need a minute to look at it then.
So the cover sheet accurately reflects the cost of the proposal. The agreement that was provided at the time when it was released did not have the complete information for what those services are. When it was noticed this afternoon, Kathy got the information from Dennis and added it. So the cover sheet, when it says cost factor, that's accurate. The information behind it was not as complete as it should have been with that proposal.
And the other really is for Elm Brook's planning purposes, but it indicates we are not participating in any of those services.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions? Okay, take a motion to approve?
I'd still like to pull it up and look at it if I can. It was downloaded, it was put in at four nineteen.
Dennis, to clarify that, the contract that for Jen Townsend is similar to the one that's there this year?
Correct.
So Dennis, how many days you got left?
No, I'm not getting into a POW mentality.
Doesn't have work?
I am not counting or marking X's in my office wall. No, I really am not. I've got very mixed emotions about retirement, yes.
Okay, that explains some stuff, because in the one sheet we had, it mentioned us being group one, but then the only other page on the information we had, we're listed under a group two of districts. And I was going to ask about that, but this group one is something different in the way that other things are grouped?
Well, correct. When the Waukesha districts formed that consortium, what they decided to do was have those two tiers, so that they would have first dibs in hiring their own people. And then they would, if they had additional hours available, parcel out additional low incidence or related services to tier-two districts at a higher cost. So if we anticipated we would need services in a low incidence area, then we would sign as a tier-two district, but the cost would most likely be higher than what we're being charged by CISA.
Because in that first two-page or three-page, the two-page thing, whatever it is, it's like we said no to all these services, and I'm wondering, what are we paying for? But being a group one, and I think you explained it, this document fills in some blanks. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Okay, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Item E?
I'll decline.
Okay, a motion to approve? Item five E, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Hi, Stephanie. Okay, item six is discussion. Matt will lead item six A, facilities planning, ongoing discussion.
Actually, I will, because it's my present page, so.
All right.
You can do that if you want to. I don't want to put you on the spot, but it's okay.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Surprise.
Really?
I can do it. So to start talking about the ESCO project?
I didn't know that. I thought the facilities was the Rockford Island, but if you'd like to talk about that, since it doesn't have a topic, sure.
Okay, well, we're starting tonight on the ESCO work. We're starting in the high school here, and in and around the island, restrooms in room two oh-two. So after the meeting, if you're interested, you could walk down there. The crews are starting. The teachers did a great job moving all their materials off the wall.
ESCO?
Energy Service Contract.
Thank you.
Yep, the train work, the classroom unit ventilators, yep. So the teachers did a great job getting their rooms ready. We had boxes available all last week, and so that all went very smooth.
So all the work will be at night?
Yep, all the work will be from four o'clock at night to one in the morning. Their crews will be cleaning up and getting the classrooms ready, so we're not going to incur any additional custodial overtime, and really no disruption to teaching. So it's really going to work out well.
And they're working on the wall?
They're going to work on the ceilings, and then the piping and ductwork, and it'll just kind of be a train, you know, as they go out in the classrooms.
Are they done?
We're going to be wrapping up the project in June.
Are they done on the plenum too then, or is that?
They've been working in the mechanical room. We got some chilled water drained in the system, and yeah, so we're starting piping. We'll be coring holes through the wall, or through the floor this week, and through the walls later this week. So, thanks. You're welcome.
So I did have questions on the.
Yep, that's what, yep, that's what the topic was about, so.
Thank you, Matt. You're welcome.
With Mike being out today, we can sort of fill that. So we have a scheduled meeting with Bray Architects tomorrow, so the mailer was, a draft was given to their, they have a communications person also. So Logan did, after the last board meeting, put together a mailer draft and got it to them, so their person could look at it. So we have a scheduled meeting tomorrow morning for us to review that, to get that out there. So before I pass it on to the board, I wanted to make sure that Bray Architects had suggestions based on that before I gave it to the board, because if you had suggestions and then they, so that's the next step in that. So hopefully tomorrow afternoon, we can send you on a draft before we would send it to the printer in terms of the mailer piece of that. We did record the school finance one oh-one, and that's a reference to that on the mailer. And then also have talked about the information on March eleventh for that Saturday in terms of that whole personalizing learning piece right now. In the meantime, Mike continues to get information met with Baird again to talk about the variability in the fiscal model in terms of referendum planning, because I think that was when Bray was here at our last meeting, they had talked about the timeline for looking at that, and that there are multiple pieces of it when we're ready to make a decision with facilities. But then the question became in the timing of the referendum, when would it make sense? We talked about that levy potential, you know, where that falls, and trying to anticipate with all the variables going on with the governor's budget right now, where that falls, and trying to find that. We also noticed in the governor's budget, the elimination of Act thirty-two, or the ESCO stuff that Matt just talked about. So that, in terms of if any of the work that Bray put together could fall under that, that might not just be an option in the future anymore, because that's right now in the budget to be removed as an option for school districts. So the work we did this year may not be a future option, if any of that stuff did fall under energy efficiency. So right now, the fiscal piece of it tends to be the biggest moving part in terms of timing, because I think you heard from Bray last time, we can work backwards into it, and we're going to move aggressively to that point of what that looks like. So the pieces right now that we're trying to do is gather enough with their engineering design, so they can put together, again, they probably can do two design development documents, but more than that would not be a good use of their time, and would be at more cost to the district in terms of the level of detail they would need for us to share to the community. So that's where we are right now. I think we'll know more after tomorrow's scheduled conference call with them, in terms of what the next steps are and what parts they're missing in terms of that. So I think the fiscal piece is playing alongside of it in terms of a timeline piece of it. So I can answer whatever questions you might have in terms of that.
Did the governor allude to why did he postpone his proposal to poll thirty-two?
Well, I think that, so when that originally came about, there were some conditions on that, and there were some questions, what people were listing as energy projects, and so they tightened it up a little bit through DPI guidelines of what you actually could do. You know, people were calling computers and a variety of things that. So they tightened up the guidelines, and I think that there's still some belief by legislators that people are taking advantage of what this is. That's probably the best piece of it, so, because it's, you know, the ability of a local school board to be able to do that without having to go to its voters.
In the groups that you're meeting with, I had contact from the SWAT group, again, the pool, they're very interested in what's going on with the pool. So I don't know, I can't remember if that was on your list, but I'm just.
Is that a list to do? Yeah, we have, since the last time we've been, we've not had any more groups, but absolutely that's on the list. Yeah, in fact, I talked, as they were, I talked with them personally, just a quick in the hall type of thing, but we didn't have a sit-down meeting, but said, got your email, caught parts of it, we're going to touch base with you as we look at that piece of it.
That's great, because they really want to support that pool. And the things they had heard, we're so far away from what we're doing. As hard as we're working on communication, we have to keep working hard on communication. No, a pool's not off the table. It's okay, we're still figuring that out, so.
Yeah, so I'm hoping that mailer will get, as soon as it gets out to everybody, and Logan's worked at, we're trying to merge on the website, both the information about personalizing learning and facilities, to sort of see where they are, so that's sort of the go-to place, that that's the landing page. You go there, and that's where everything is, so you don't have to keep trying to figure out where everything is, so.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Item six B, Logan, if you can lead us with the Whittenell School District Communications Plan.
So our new communication plan, I think you all have a copy of it. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, but I just want to walk through it in an appropriate amount of detail. And before we get into it, I think it's important to know that this is a living document, so it's something that we continually want to be updating and improving. And I also think it's important to know kind of how I approached creating the document. So the communication plan that was in place when I came in, it was short, pretty vague. The document wouldn't really be of much help to someone who didn't write it, or someone who wasn't familiar with the type of work that was detailed in it, which in a sense is okay, because the communication plan is going to be utilized most by the communication coordinator, but I still felt like we needed more. So I tried to find a balance. Yeah, I tried to find a balance so that the document is not unnecessarily explanatory, but it's something that someone outside of my role can look to and find the whys and the hows about our communication plan.
So you organically created it?
So if we look at the very start of the plan, we have our overview. So the Whittenell School District will communicate with its stakeholders, and they're listed there in that first box. We have our students, our parents, our staff, and then the community at large through various channels, and then the channels are listed there as well. So we have our website, we have social media, specifically Facebook, Twitter, and our new Instagram page, newsletters, both the staff newsletter, the e-weekly, and the community newsletter, the viewpoint, local media messaging through Infinite Campus, emails with our email lists that we have, and then presentations. The district will communicate its key messages, which are listed in the third box. So the first one is, the Whittenell School District engages learners in a way that fosters innovation, risk-taking, and exploration to attain personal learning goals without the fear of failure. And that was adapted from that point-of-view statement that we saw at the February thirteenth presentation on personalizing learning. The second key message is that the Whittenell School District is committed to keeping its stakeholders engaged and informed. The third message, the Whittenell School District produces lifelong learners who are adaptive, independent, self-assured, and personally successful. Again, this is something that we took from those presentations on personalizing learning. While that first key message is kind of, what do we want to do, the third one is, what do we want the outcome of that to be? And then finally, the Whittenell School District is a safe place, meaning that we do not tolerate violence or discrimination on the basis of gender, race, religion, origin, sexual orientation, ability, whether learning or physical, or health, either mental or physical. Then following that, we have a SWAT analysis, and we have a list of some strengths. These are positives for our district, either by effort or just intrinsic. We have weaknesses, things that aren't positive about our district, and either we don't have much control over them, or we haven't begun taking steps towards changing these things, opportunities, the things that we are currently working to turn into strengths, and then threats, so those things that threaten us capitalizing on those opportunities.
So how did you brainstorm to get these?
Oh, we actually did it as an admin team. So I asked everyone to give me a list of everything that they thought was a strength, weakness, opportunity, and threat, and then I kind of looked for patterns among all of those and came up with these lists.
And they could be real, or they are real?
They are real. What?
I mean, are they happening in our schools?
I think so, yes. I mean, I think that everything that's on here is because multiple people said it, and so I thought that that was a testament to the fact that.
This analysis is of our district.
Right. Yeah, that, I'm.
From the stat. That was that stack of used Post-its you had in your.
Yes.
There one day I stopped.
Yes, that is what that was.
You were crunching that stuff pretty.
Yes. So the next section is the objectives for our communication. So there's a statement there, we want to communicate paramount pertinent and positive information consistently through each district channel, so that stakeholders from any subgroup feel that they are communicated to, that they have access to information and contact, and that Whittenell School District is a successful district with identifiable key messages, which is a mouthful, which is why preceding that statement, it's kind of broken up into single-barrel objectives. So first, we have output objectives, the things that we want to do in our communication, and then outcome objectives, the impact that we want our communication to have. And then following that, we have a breakdown of every single channel that was listed at the beginning of the plan. So we can look to the website, which is the first one there, just as an example. So each channel has a purpose, which is why are we communicating through this channel? Then goals, what things we want to keep in mind as we communicate through this channel? Content, the type of information that should be communicated through that channel? Tracking, how do we keep track of what we're doing with that channel, and how do we analyze where we're most successful with that channel? Then rights, so this is a list of who has rights to use this channel. And then finally, stakeholder involvement, and that kind of shows who does this channel reach. And that's a really helpful piece, I feel, for someone outside of my role to look to. If they say, I really need to get this information to community members, not necessarily parents or students, they could look to the different channels and say, okay, the website might not be the best place, because community members are a secondary audience for that channel, so let's find a channel where they're a primary audience. And then if you continue through the plan, you'll see that there are the same sections for every single channel that was listed, and so that's really the bulk of the plan. I'm not going to go through each one, because we'd be here for a long time. But leading up to the final page, where we have that external group and event promotion section, this is a really good example of how I mentioned in the beginning that this document is going to be evolving. In my first draft of this, this section didn't exist, but we recently, as an admin group, kind of worked this out and decided how we were going to deal with external promotion, and so now that piece is in there. And so I think it serves as a good example of the fact that we're going to be continually updating this plan. There it is.
So what about incoming communication?
Incoming communication, what do you mean?
Okay. So if one of those stakeholders want to communicate with us in some way, or affect back channel loop as part of the communications plan, and how that's going to be handled, is that?
That would be, that's specifically with board policy, in terms of communicating to board members, and that this is a district's external marketing communication thing. You're talking about stakeholder input, that's addressed sort of in board policy, is that what you're?
So I guess I'm thinking of if we put something out on Facebook, and people post or have opinions or have suggestions, is that something that needs to be touched by us, monitored, you know, handled in some fashion?
So Stephanie, what do you mean by us? You mean the district as a whole?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Not the board, but you know, I've always seen communication as a two-way living public entity, so it's good that we're getting our message out, but what channels of communication do we have to getting a message in to the district?
I think it kind of, the one I mentioned, that this, I want this to be something that people outside of my role can reference, if they're wondering, like, how are we going about doing the staff newsletter or something like that. But as far as people coming to us with Facebook messages, or emailing us, like, or emailing me, that's something obviously that I would be doing personally, like getting back to people like that. So I don't know if it's something that I would have to lay out in this plan, how I would communicate back to people that are giving us feedback.
But that's a good question. We've talked about a procedural manual that goes with this, so this is really a strategic communication plan in terms of that, like the details, like there's going to be a lot of stuff, like how you upload and how you respond within 24 hours, and who does it, and if Logan is out, we also talked about that this is not our crisis plan, because that's its own communication plan within a crisis plan, which is on our docket for the summer. So it's a starting point. So we're still very much into the early pieces, but we talked about that there's probably going to be a procedural document that accompanies this by each of these channels, in terms of, you know, let's say Logan, and like tonight Eric is out or whatever, and something needed to get on it, and they were the two or three primary people. Procedurally, who would do it, and what's the timeline in terms of response to Facebook, or something that gets posted on Twitter automatically, and we need to shut it down and contact them directly because it's something that good and bad. Those are some, we talked about that a little bit at admin team, we talked about procedural things. So I think that that's yet coming in terms of that, but so from that standpoint, yep.
That was the glaring thing to me, too, because communication isn't just what we're going to tell you and how we're going to tell you in the different channels, but it is also the listening piece. How do we know they even heard us? So in addition to getting feedback from people on certain items at certain times, that might be a piece we can add in then in the future, is that we're going to have listening sessions. Maybe we need to set up for the other kinds of communication. I've seen districts where before a board meeting, sometimes they have a half-hour listening session. I mean, there's just thinking out of the box here, different ways that we can make our communication plan, not just a marketing plan, but that addresses both the listening needs. And I do, I like what you said about, you know, how do they respond? And my question is, how do they know? I know we used to do surveys.
How do they know we're listening?
And, right, and we used to do surveys, so. Okay, is that going to still, is that part of your communications plan, or is that separate? I realize this is, but that was one of my thoughts, is that maybe we could put that we do that in here, like every three years, so you can give us feedback. Just my thoughts.
I would agree that the communication plan, I think what you have is great, but it's one way. I think we need, we need the other way covered as well. So I'm not talking about establishing the policy or the procedure as to, you know, so-and-so will check the Facebook every morning at eight. That's not what I'm talking about. But I'm talking about the same kind of overall, you know, umbrella type of document this is, covering how, what our intentions are to get, you know, to communicate outwards, the same kind of, our intentions are how we're going to be listening. To me, that just needs to.
So as a district or the board?
As part of the communications plan.
Okay, so much broader than that.
The district. Just as specific or whatever as you have this, but in the reverse. You know, we're not telling them how to communicate a week, but you know, these options, you know, as far as how we're listening, these options are available, and our intentions are to deal with, however you end up working, we have to have some place to start. This is a great, a great first step in outgoing. We need to have a great first step in incoming, or at least some kind of first step.
And I see Facebook as not just a one-way channel. I see that as a two-way channel, because maybe, I forget, I don't recall reading that in here, but the fact that people like our Facebook pages is a way for two-way communication. And knowing that they're reading those and continue to like those things, that's a two-way form of communication. So some of that might be.
Talk about it a little bit, we talked about expectations with how many people are going to follow each social media outlet.
So right, so I think it was a good starting point. You know, I think Logan did a great job on that, because these are things that exist. We currently don't have any formalized input things, and so that's literally going to be starting from scratch, and that probably is going to require some conversation here, without us saying we're going to start doing surveys and listening sessions, because that's, that's got to be who or however we're doing that. I mean, you know, I know that our principals at buildings hold coffee chats or different groups like that, and that can be one of those pieces. But we will be really starting from scratch in terms of developing norms and protocols, so.
So under objectives, output and outcome, we're just talking about where's an input, and can that be expanded on? Essentially. Thanks.
Do you have any questions?
I do.
I have something, too.
On two certain items here, only for rights, it's only for you, should we put communication coordinator or Desi knee?
For which channel?
Well, sixteen-seventeen, specific tracking questions, and then local media, just in case you're not here. I mean, how stringent do we follow this?
Are you talking about the Instagram section under social media? Basically, the channels that say that they're the only one with rights?
Yeah, you're the only person.
Local media, for example.
Local media as well.
So putting it back. So putting a backup in.
And then the other one is 16, 17, the state of tracking question.
And that's already something that has, like, evolved, as I've had conversations with people about who has rights to Infinite Campus, and people have been added to that list. So like I said, it's going to be continually updated. If someone says that they would like to have access to Facebook or something like that, they can be added to that rights list. It's something that would be updated.
Okay. My other question is, do we have discussions or, I mean, on these weaknesses and opportunities and threats?
We, we have been using that format in the focus groups with our parents, and that's been working pretty well. And so I think that's why it seemed to work well in these communication plans too. So when we met with the parent groups with personalizing learning, with facilities, we sort of did that SWAT analysis when the Citizens Advisory Committee was part of it, and they thought that was a very helpful tool of doing that, because it's a non-threatening way, it's sort of looking at what things we do well, what are some things we have not yet captured on, but have some opportunities. And the threats are sort of like, if you don't do that, yeah, so we haven't yet, but.
Right, some of them, I'm sure, like rumors, I'm sure that our building principals are working on that daily, you know, in administration. But then there's some of the things that are in here that are, that are our stuff. I mean, government engagement, I think is one of them. You know, lack of political engagement. How do we get that to us to, so we look at that? I mean, I guess, because we just eliminated the, did we eliminate the political?
Legislative committee?
Yeah.
We didn't eliminate it, no.
The what?
We didn't?
We didn't eliminate it.
The what?
The legislative committee.
Okay, thank you.
But these aren't necessarily always real threats, these are potential threats.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's how, they're just things to be aware of that you've not paid attention to, they could, right, yep.
Why I thought they had a place in here is just the fact that, just like if, at any opportunity, we want to be communicating our key messages, at the same time, at any opportunity, we want to be highlighting these strengths that we have as a district, not drawing attention to our weaknesses, like just always having that in mind as you're communicating with different stakeholders.
So, so you guys have been doing SWAT analysis stuff for a while? I thought you said, somebody said that this, that this didn't just start, that this has been the way we've been doing things for a while, or? So, so I kind of, I think, sure, what Quinn is saying in a sense that, I mean, there's, you know, we, we should, it'd be nice if we could become aware of, of these things when they're done, so that maybe there's something we need to put on the agenda to, to discuss, address, or, you know what I mean, before.
Sure, so it was part of the parent focus groups in January and February.
Okay.
So when I say we've been doing them, that's, that's what I mean by those three meetings. And then Logan ran this activity with admin teams. As we continue to hold and broaden the group of people, we're going to probably continue to use this tool. It's served us well in the last couple of parent groups. It creates a framework instead of people just randomly saying, "I don't like this, I like this, I don't like," you know, it gives a, a, and so we'll continue to use it. So I think we're at a point that it's not, it's still new enough, I would, yeah, I would want to clarify.
But as you collect that, as you collect that data, are you going to be sharing that with us in your communications?
Sure, as we expand those meetings and continue to have more of those, yep.
I think they're big enough now, you know what I mean? And it's getting shared with in this format, but I mean, as you do more of these things, whether it gets any bigger or not.
Yeah, Bray actually collected them for us when we did it the last, so I could ask them to share with what was done at those focus groups. They were still preliminary, so, but I, but I'm more than happy to share what the parents had at that point, sure.
Appreciate it.
Quinn, to your point, I think it might be as we're looking at some of those input methods, maybe at a workshop topic to sort of do a, look at the communication plan, and then it would be an opportunity to look at those things too. Because it'd be more of a discussion at that point, they're not like action items, but they are worthy of a discussion to see where do they fall in the priorities.
I just wanted to say, I thought you did a really good job on the communication plan. I've never really seen a communication plan where it outlines incoming communication. I've only ever seen one like this that has that, so I didn't find that piece missing at all in it. The only thing I did find missing is when you listed the groups in there, community members, whatever. School board was not listed in there unless you're considering them as something.
When I said staff, I was considering internal communication, which I would kind of consider the board, but maybe I could change that to saying internal groups, something like that.
So that was really my only comment.
Yeah, I wanted to add that part too. We are the spokespeople for the board, and I wanted to compliment you, because I thought that your key messages here are really important for us to use. And I, as I look through those, I think we're already using those. We talk about personalized learning as our signature program, we talk about preparing our students, we spend time on our mission and vision statements, so I really appreciate that. And I think the board has to take that serious when we talk to people in the community about issues or when they call us, or just when we're out there at events. So thank you for that, I thought those were really well done too.
Thank you.
Thank you, excellent job.
Thank you.
And obviously, as we go forward, we continue to compile data, let us know if anything changes, if you need anything from us, or.
Of course.
Things come along, we'll hopefully have a workshop to discuss any opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item seven is action items. We have two action items tonight, and both were initially presented during the February 13th meeting. Item 7A is approval of new course proposal for the 2017-18 academic year. Do you have any additional questions? Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7B is approval of V-rate purchases, internal wiring upgrade. Do we have any additional questions? Seeing none, motion to approve?
Motion moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, items for future consideration. As a reminder, no discussion or action will be taken at this time. Do any board members have topics that they would like to discuss in the future? Okay, seeing none. Item nine, board member announcements. Does anyone have an announcement?
Yeah, I went to the state meet for swimming, so I did get to see our boys in action. So we had, for diving, it was particularly tough. The top five finishers were all seniors, and we had our sophomore, David Hahn, took eighth place. He was off the podium by, I think, seven points roughly.
Is that a lot?
No, it's not, that's not even a dive difference, if you will. But then we had Stefan Rausch, he's our foreign exchange student, he took 12th. And then our senior, who's been there four times, Ben Bell, he did take 15th in the 100. He also took 12th in the 50, and he did get on our kickboards, as they call them, to the top times in our school history. So he made it on the 50 with a 22.57.
There's a really nice picture in the paper of him.
Oh, yeah.
Did you say he placed in the 50?
12th in the 50, 15 in the 100. There was also someone who put up like an Olympic time in the, in the Division One, I think in the 400, someone. Their split was an Olympic time for, it was like 19 something. So that guy, he's going to Ohio State, and he's probably going to the Olympic trials. But anyway, congratulations to them, and again, I'd like to hopefully have them back in the next board meetings so they can kind of talk to us about, you know, their experiences and how everything's going.
A student with the Olympic time must have had a better pool to practice in.
I would say so.
You mean the starting blocks?
Yeah, the starting blocks, yeah.
Starting blocks that don't start under the water?
Oh, come on.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Yeah, I wanted to mention that the board had a basket at Falcon Fest last year, and that I'd be happy to coordinate that again this year for, on behalf of the board. So if any of you have any ideas, let me know. Last year was kind of cool, we did this art, I got most of it donated, so, but let me know if you have any ideas. It was an art piece, and they could go paint a picture, so, and it went off pretty good, so. We'll need some new ideas for this year.
And when is Falcon Fest?
May 14th, it's later this year.
Yeah.
Mother's Day weekend.
And then second, the library.
Or 13th, Saturday, sorry.
The library wine tasting is, I think, this week or today?
Thursday.
So if anyone wants to support our local library, one of them's a fan.
Your girl's going to get liquored up?
We are going to go support our local library, sorry. And thirdly, I want to apologize, my grandma daycare didn't realize why my iPad was down so much. I'm like, it's not going to make it through the meeting, so that's why I'm not texting or anything. My grandkids were on here today, I totally forgot to check that, so grandma daycare has its challenges.
I'm sure the 35 people watching on YouTube are wondering.
I'm not texting.
Why you're on your phone.
I'm actually following along on my tiny little screen here, so I apologize for that. But normally, I don't like to have that on.
I'd have shared mine.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Good luck to all our junior class with ACT tomorrow. Hope everyone's going to bed early and getting a good breakfast tomorrow before you take your test.
Not my two little angels, they're staying up.
And then just a reminder, this Saturday is the solo and ensemble. If you haven't signed up already to volunteer, please do, they still need quite a bit of help, so thank you.
We're, we're hosting it?
We're hosting.
Oh, my God.
That's a big deal.
Yeah, I remember going to St. Francis a couple of years.
Yeah, I went online today to check the, the sign of up link, and I think they needed 24 people for room hosts in the AM session. I think we had eight, so.
Where, where is that? Where do we find that?
Um, there is an email, can we send it? An email went out today from the band group, just a reminder that if you want to sign up, sign up. And the signup genius link was right in it.
That's pretty cool, it really is.
Yeah, I'll, tomorrow night, I have a scout meeting, you know, I know it's, they'll, I'll talk to them about the, Chris Snowak and I have talked about community service hours for the scouts, and so I'll try and pin down a final number and get them signed up.
Okay. Okay, so item 10, it's time I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Quinn would like to stay a little bit longer, so.
Second.
We'll all leave and Quinn can stay here.
Is it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you and have a wonderful night.
That's it, we go home?
No.
No.
That was for our, Cheryl and Mike can go home. Our principals can go home.